My calendar said Monday. Ooh, that's not good.
It is Monday.
My calendar said Monday.
It is Monday. So 13th, Monday the 13th.
Nancy's just making up stuff.
I guess I wouldn't have been there.
Do we have to come for the whole urban design presentation or just at the end for the graduation?
At the end.
So it is Tuesday, not Monday?
No, it's Monday.
Monday.
It's Monday.
It's Monday morning.
I have it on my...
Monday morning from 8:30 to 10:30 is their session and they're going to present the certificates at the end of the session.
Because the other things had Tuesday.
I thought it was the 14th.
It's Tuesday. I think the first email was wrong. It said Monday. We should ask.
Yeah, we need to ask.
Oh, it's Tuesday. I've got...
Oh.
I moved everything from Monday to Tuesday.
You know what? You're right. It does say Tuesday, July 14th.
Yeah.
Oh, great.
But then the invitation says Monday.
I know. But then look at the detail of invitation.
I'm going to forward this...
It says 10:30.
I'm going to forward it to Mikhail and tell her to clarify.
We're on vacation. If anybody doesn't want to come.
Well, half of the world isn't voting for us anyway.
I know.
I got a really nasty phone mail last night. Glad I didn't take it.
Nasty phone call?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, those are...
Oh, I had three. It's like, mm, some of these emails.
Reason one?
I haven't lis... I didn't catch it.
Are we on being videoed so people can hear us?
Yes.
Howard, is this being livestreamed today?
Probably.
Yes, it's... Mike's around. Yeah, this is live. So just wanted to let you know.
I made sure my security camera was all at batteries.
If everyone here can please silence their devices. I wish this... the clock on this was correct.
Yeah, that clock is always a little off.
No, this one says 9:05.
9:05?
It says 9:05.
Mine says 9:58.
I got 9:58.
Yeah, me too. But this is on the...
Yeah, but up there.
I got 9:59.
Yeah.
9:9.
Minutes, minutes fast. Or so.
Well, hi.
Hey, how are you?
Good morning.
You been good?
Yep, thanks.
Sure, we're just peachy. Happy to have... get to come and see each other again.
The recipient of the masks was thrilled.
Awesome. Let me know if you need more.
I will.
In fact, on that, if you... anybody knows anybody that needs them, you can direct them to City Hall, to the annex building down below. She has a nice stop.
Oh.
She can hand out if somebody needs a mask or available.
And where... I'm sorry, I didn't hear where.
Right here.
The annex.
The annex.
Where G is, yeah. Okay, you guys ready? Good morning. Welcome to the July... get that right, this time, July the 10th special meeting of the Pontegorroda City Council. And we are here today to fix something that we did on Wednesday and get things correct. So this shouldn't take very long. We'll all stand for the pledge of allegiance first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record reflect that all council members are here with exception of Jahaak Cummings, which is excused, and all city officials are present or in the building. And I'm going to turn this over to our finance director, Kristin Simeone, to lead us through this. Or do I turn it over to you, Howard?
Well, I will read the resolution into the record. Kristin can explain why, and then it'll be the same explanation for every single one. So we'll just explain it first time.
Okay.
And then... So, "A resolution of the city of Pontegorroda, Florida, adopting a proposed millage rate for fiscal year 2020-2021, setting a date, time, and place of public hearing to consider adoption of the tentative millage rate and budget, repealing resolution number 3503-2020 and providing an effective date."
Thank you, Kristin Simeone, for the record. I apologize for you having to come in again. But as we were finishing up our certification to the county, providing our date, I was notified that our dates have to be within September 3rd through the September 18th. So our first council meeting this year is normally the first and the third Wednesday of every month, as it has been. And so we realized we were out of compliance. It has to be 65 days from the certification or July 1st, whichever is later. So although the county certified it to us on June 30th, we should have used the July 1st number, and therefore it should have started with September 3rd as our earliest date for our tentative hearing. So because of that, we have to decide how you would like... which date we would like to use for our first hearing, talking to talk about the tentative millage rate and budget in September. So in September, there... it is five Wednesdays in that month. So we could do a couple of things. We could change our September council meeting dates from September 2nd and September 16th to September 9th and September 23rd. And then if there was... from the August to the September 9th, that would give us a three-week break. So if some additional business came up, we could still hold an additional meeting on the 2nd if it was warranted. The other option would be if you wanted to keep those council meetings the same, we could do September 3rd as a possibility or some other date. The specific dates that are not available are September 8th and September 10th, because those are the county and school boards. So we could move it just one day after your council meeting on September 2nd and do it Thursday evening at 5:01. So we wanted to get your input on what you feel is... what you would like to do on that.
We're actually recommending to keep so that you don't have to come in at 5:01 on a day when there's no council meeting, to move the council meetings to September 9th and the 23rd, if you... if it's okay. That's still the Wednesdays. We could do the council meetings during the day and then come back for a budget hearing at 5:01. It seems to have worked in the past. That's what we're... if it works out for you...
My calendar is good on either day.
Or we would have a council meeting on September 2nd and then come back for a budget public hearing at 5:01 on September 3rd.
Can you please explain on the record why we have to do it at 5:01 PM?
It's required state statute.
Yes. State statutes require after 5:00 PM, so that's why it's 5:01 PM.
I just wanted that on the record. Someone asked me that.
That's a good question that we've asked... been asked that seems like almost annually, so.
Have we done any advertising for public hearings or anything for the September meetings? Then I would suggest we go with the later dates of both Wednesdays and keep them each... keep them grouped on Wednesdays.
Oh, I don't really care. I mean, we have to come in here twice anyway. So whether I come in on the day... same day as council or the next night, I don't...
Well, I...
It doesn't matter to me. It's... we're still coming in here twice.
There are enough a lot of calendar things. My calendar is already filling up a lot for September, so I would just as soon get it done on the same day. Personally, that would be my preference.
Debbie, John?
Either is fine with me. When you say the same day, you mean both meetings, yeah.
23rd.
The 9th and the 23rd works better for me than coming in on Thursday.
Yeah, okay. So if that's the majority of... then...
Okay.
Then let's move the council meetings to the 9th and the 23rd.
Okay. So for our resolution, we... you know, the resolution that will be before you, we will fill in September 9th as the new date for our public hearing to take place here at City Council at 5:01 PM regarding the proposed millage rate of 3.4337 mils, which is 2.59% over the calculated rollback rate of 3.3469, and to talk about the millage and the adoption of the budget at that time.
I just noticed on the agenda item, it says the public hearing must take place between September 3 and 18, so...
So September 9th will be between those dates.
Right, but the second hearing would...
Oh, the second hearing...
Does that have to fall in that timeframe too?
So that the first hearing has to fall between in those dates.
The first one.
Then within 15 days of our hearing, we have to do our notification of when our final budget hearing will be. And once for that... once that advertisement posts between two to five days, we have to do our second hearing.
Okay.
So it will fall within... even though we do ours within 14 days, that's still okay because the advertisement is just within the 15 days.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so how do you want a motion to be stated? Do we need to say that it's repealing what was voted on on Wednesday?
So yes, the title does include that it repeals that resolution from September 8... I'm sorry, from July 8th, and provides the new date in... to be, as decided here, September 9th at 5:01 PM here in the council chambers.
Okay.
Go for it, Lynn.
Okay, so I'll take a motion.
I will make a motion that we approve the resolution for the proposed millage rate for fiscal year 2020-2021 to repeal resolution number 3503-2020 and set the millage... proposed millage rate at 3.4337 mils. And the public hearing for this item will be on September the 9th, 2020, at 5:01 PM.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to... for this motion. All in favor, please say... signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Did we have everything in there that we needed for that?
Yes.
Okay.
A resolution adopting a tentative levy of annual special assessment for the Buckley's Past dredging assessment area for fiscal year 2020-2021, setting a date, time, and place of public hearing to consider final adoption of the assessment, repealing resolution number 3504-2020 and providing an effective date.
So again, Kristin Simeone for the record. So this resolution will set the tentative levy at $399.95 per water access unit for the second year of the three-year assessment for those parcels that did not prepay the assessment. The... as just discussed, we will set the... this will set the final hearing for this assessment as September 9th, 2020, at 5:01 PM here in council chambers.
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution for the tentative levy of special assessment for the Buckley's Past dredging assessment area for fiscal year 2020-2021, repealing resolution 3504-2020. And the Buckley's Past assessment is at $399.95 per water access unit for the second year of the three-year assessment for parcels that did not prepay. And the public hearing date for this item will be on September 9th, 2020, at 5:01 PM.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
A resolution adopting a tentative levy of annual special assessment for the city of Pontegorroda Lot Mowing Assessment District for fiscal year 2020-2021, setting a date, time, and place of public hearing to consider final adoption of the assessment, repealing resolution number 3505-2020 and providing an effective date.
So this resolution sets the tentative mandatory lot mowing program assessment at $175, which is $5 over the previous year. It will set the hearing for September 9th at 5:01 PM here in council chambers.
I feel like the motion maker here. I make a motion, we accept the resolution for the tentative levy of the special assessment for the mandatory lot mowing program for fiscal year 2020-2021 at $175, and to set the public hearing date for this hearing on September the 9th, 2020, at 5:01 PM.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries unanimously. We are adjourned as the city council, and we are now convening as the Pontegorroda Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment District.
A resolution adopting a tentative levy of annual special assessment for the Pontegorroda Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment District for fiscal year 2020-2021, setting a date, time, and place of public hearing to consider final adoption of the assessment, repealing resolution number 3507-2020 and providing an effective date.
So this resolution provides the tentative annual assessment for the PGI Canal Maintenance Assessment District of $550 per family residence, which represents a $100 decrease from fiscal year 2019-2020. For all other properties, the assessment is .058 dollars, or, you know, per square foot of land lying less than 120 lineal feet from the seawall. This resolution repeals the 3507-2020 and sets the date for final hearing as September 9th, 2020, at 5:01 PM here in council chambers.
I'll make a motion, we approve the resolution for the tentative levy of the Pontegorroda Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment District for fiscal year 2020-2021 at $550 per family residence. And we set the public hearing date for September 9th, 2020, at 5:01 PM.
Repeal the resolution.
Sorry?
Did you...
Oh, I'm sorry. And repealing... I apologize. And I amend that. Repealing number 3507-2020.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We are adjourned as the Pontegorroda Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment District, and we are convening as the Burnt Store Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment District.
A resolution adopting a tentative levy of annual special assessment for the Burnt Store Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment District for fiscal year 2020-2021, setting a date, time, and place of public hearing to consider final adoption of the assessment, repealing resolution number 3506-2020 and providing an effective date.
So for the Burnt Store Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment District, this resolution sets the tentative annual assessment at $460 per single-family residence, which is $95 less than the prior year. For all of the properties, the assessment is .048 dollars per square foot of land lying less than 120 lineal feet from the seawall. This resolution repeals resolution 506.2020 and sets the final hearing for September 9th, 2020, at 5:01 PM here in city council chambers.
I'll make a motion, we accept the resolution for the tentative levy for the Burnt Store Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment District for fiscal year 2020-21, repealing resolution number 3506-2020, and set the rate for this at $460 per single-family residence, and scheduling the public hearing for this on September the 9th, 2020, at 5:01 PM.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries unanimously. We are adjourned as the Burnt Store Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment District and reconvened as the Pontegorroda City Council.
Two little items to bring up.
Okay.
So as we put together the August 19th council agenda, since it's going to be about six weeks.
Yes.
If we feel that that's going to be a lot to put on there, what are your schedules if we wanted to have us divvy it up for either August 26th or September 2nd?
So you're saying have a second meeting instead of one long day like we had Wednesday?
Right.
So then in September, we'd have two meetings, the 7th and the 9th.
We'd have three.
Three.
You could have three.
Yeah.
The 2nd, the 9th, and the 23rd. Or in August, you could have two, the 19th and the 26th.
Do we think we need two meetings?
If we do, are you around?
I'm around.
I believe staycation is the word of the century this year.
I mean, either that or we have one long one. But it's going to be six weeks and we have a lot of items.
Yeah.
I would rather break it up than do one long one again. That was brutal.
That was torture.
Well, it depends on what it is, too. The last meeting was very unusual with so many emails that had to be read. So we were being attentive but inactive for three hours.
You know, we've got, for instance, we're going to have a utility rate study that is progressing very nicely, and that may be ready to be presented in early September. And that's a more of a discussion first, and a presentation. And do you want to put that on a council meeting day when you have all these other items? We're going to have... and again, I'm just thinking ahead of some other topics. Maybe we have a special meeting on September 2nd where we just have some discussion topics, like of various studies that we have ready to go. I don't know yet. I'm just trying to see what your pleasure might be to have a special meeting. Another council meeting maybe on September 2nd. That would be three, but at least it's... it releases some of the pressure on the 19th. As we plan ahead.
We're very excited about meeting another time.
I'm not hearing a lot of enthusiasm.
Well, if we are going to have a very... a lot on the agenda, it's likely that we are not going to have something as contentious as what we had, so that we're not going to have the kind of... it will be a different meeting. It will have a lot... a lot for us to prepare and a lot of different topics for us to discuss. So it's a matter of, do we want to have a couple of meetings where we come in and we're here and we're leaving before noon? Or do we want to have another meeting where we break for lunch and we come back for a couple of hours or whatever?
Right. That's all I'm asking.
Yeah.
I mean, if you don't mind breaking for lunch and coming back, we'll do it. But if you want to maybe split it up...
Do we think it's going to last eight hours like Wednesday did?
I don't know yet. But we have potentially some stuff coming up. We've got... I mean, we've got quite a list.
I would actually prefer to have two meetings in August and two in September, given that choice. Because otherwise, September is going to be just packed full of meetings. And there's a whole lot of other stuffs coming back on the calendars already.
Yeah, that's true.
I would tend to agree with that, to go August 26th for a second meeting if we need to.
The other thing...
But we need to know. We need to at least know and block it out because, you know, calendars get booked and...
We'll know... we'll know by... let's see, next week is the 13th through the 17th, something like that? We'll know the following week.
Okay.
We'll know the following week, how we're doing.
Okay.
It's not just the length of meeting either for...
Number of topics.
It's the amount of preparation time
Yeah.
that it takes. And when we don't get the agendas until Friday, and then we have, you know, lots and lots to read by Wednesday, I think we can come to it with a fresher perspective if we have some spacing of the prep work.
Yeah, if we have too much... too much to prepare for, holy cow.
It's...
I mean, and residents don't... they have asked, well, when do you get the agenda? We get this agenda the same time you get it. So... and we get the same information you get. So it's...
Okay, so we'll... we'll give you an answer.
Yeah.
It looks like the preference is the 19th and the 26th.
Yes.
If we have to have two meetings.
If we have to. Okay.
Yeah.
The other... the other topic is, a couple of meetings ago, we talked about resurfacing the pickleball courts, and we talked about possibly resurfacing the basketball at the same time.
Mm-hmm.
We got the quotes. They're well within my purview to approve. They're about $16,000 to do both. They were going to be part of Phase 2 of the Gilchrist Park renovation. Not the pickleball courts necessarily, but basketball was. So do you want us to move forward now and get them both done?
Yes.
The reason on the pickleball courts is we... the quote included resurfacing the whole thing, even though we only have four courts.
Right.
Resurfacing the whole thing, which we think is more cost-effective if we do, in case we might want to switch around the nets on occasion to have play at different courts. We just think it's more cost-effective to just not do four, and then all of a sudden have to come back and do another four. They're all in the same shape.
Well, are you going to paint... you can resurface the court. Do you... do you have to paint the striping on all four... all eight courts?
For the record, Rick Heaney, Director of Public Works, you don't have to. It's just if you ever wanted that done and for us to get somebody to remobilize, it wouldn't be cost-efficient if down the line you wanted them painted for some reason. I believe it's going to cost you lo... more in the long run if you decide to make that choice.
We're only going to have four operational at some point in time. Maybe we might want to take the four current playable courts and move them to other playable courts. I don't know. It's just...
What was the logic for the current configuration?
The sound.
That would supposedly result in the least sound.
Yes. When we were doing the screening and such, we discussed that with the manufacturer, and they advised us of those courts to choose to have the least amount of sound.
It's the hottest courts.
Yes.
Yes, they are.
Mm-hmm.
There's not a lot of play there, right?
I mean, yeah. I mean, well, not now, but.
No.
I mean, was the sound difference significant? Do we know, or can we calculate?
I doubt it is. It's just, they said that the closer to the screen that you are, the less noise. But I'm sure it's, I don't think probably you or I could stand there and tell the difference. But that's what we're advised to do.
So that's the reason we only, that's the reason we said we got the quote to do it all at once.
I would like to see you proceed with all of it. I think that there may come a time when during the summer, we move the courts to the back four to get heat relief, when there aren't as many people to hear the noise, but there aren't also as many people playing to make the noise. And then maybe during season, when it picks up, we move it back to the front to appease people who think it's quieter there. I, I think we.
That's very logical.
That's illogical.
I try.
Yes, you do.
Okay, so we have.
Go ahead, and that way, you know, it's done, and then we.
Now, we, you know, we will make sure that when we get the comments from folks, you're resurfacing all eight courts, you plan to bring back eight courts. The answer is no, but there's a reason why we're doing it.
Yeah. And that's a good reason.
We'll move forward.
Reasonable reason.
I think it is.
We'll move forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. And since we're talking pickleball, the college is supporting pickleplex on their charging for memberships.
They are.
Mm-hmm. So it's, they are supporting them being a financially stable organization. So they said this is a, they thought it was well thought out. And that came from the finance director from the university, or the college that actually oversees the operations, so. I just have, well, no, I guess that you've answered my question. I was going to, the one question I was going to have is, well, geez, since we moved the meeting in September, maybe we should move the 19th meeting to the 26th. But you already said, no, we've got so much on the agenda. We need to have two meetings, so.
Maybe.
Yes.
I wouldn't move the 19th.
Well, we can't now. We've already done public hearing announcements in the paper.
Yeah. No, I, I realize that.
Yeah. The reason I brought up the Gilchrist Park and the basketball, the pickleball and the basketball court is it relates to the budget item that we have on the agenda today.
How soon are they going to get those resurfaced? Do we know?
I don't know.
I'm sure we'll get questions.
Rick Heaney again. We, we got budget numbers, so now we got to give it to procurement. It probably would take 30 days or so before they could probably start. And then once they start, you know, so I'd say 60 days. I think that's what we did with the tennis courts from start to finish was about 60 days. Could be sooner.
Bidding, and then they got to get mobilized.
But the actual process isn't 60 days.
No, no, but by the time they get all their quotes, and then the company schedules us into their schedule and get out here, and rain days, we are entering the rainy season, so.
Yeah.
You know, so 60 days to be safe, but it could be, you know, less.
Takes time.
Yep. Any other items?
Nope.
The only thing I wanted to say was a comment has been made, like, why aren't we wearing masks when we're sitting here at the desk atias? And the answer is because we're socially distanced, and we did this intentionally so that we are all socially distanced. In fact, the room is set up so that there is ample room in between each allowable chair. So there is social distancing. However, when we get up and move about then, we do put on a mask, so. I just wanted to. Councilmember comments, Lynn?
Just one thing. I sent Mikhail an email and asked her about the Citizens Academy. We just, we were referring to that earlier. And it is Tuesday.
Okay.
So if we wanted to come, we'd be coming towards the end of that.
Probably 10 o'clock.
Urban design is going to do an abbreviated session. I don't, can we have Jennifer send something out as to approximately what time they should show up?
Sure.
Yeah, we'll send something out.
Okay. Debbie?
I was supposed to say this Wednesday, and I didn't. And I heard from my board, the mural is done. Skip signed it, it's done. And I urge everybody to go by the library and see pages of our past. It's an absolutely splendid historical representation of all the libraries that Punta Gorda has had. And it's a lot of fun to see where your book that you paid for is.